So the first one is Mr. Hassan Ahoun. He would like to address the board on books, and he is from Dearborn.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. My name is Hassan Ahoun. They call me Haskash in the community. I'm here to address the issue where the books that you guys have are inappropriate. At this time, I'm asking you guys to take the books down. Because I got a call from Virginia today, and they have the same situation. Where he told me, "You're gonna come today, and then I have metal detectors." And you guys had metal detectors. You had security. Because what happened last time is one of you guys sat there and disrespected the community by telling them, "Shut up." When you guys first addressed, "To calm down." And I said, "You know, this is inappropriate." And I'm not gonna sit here and tolerate anybody to disrespect my community, you know? We're out here for the kids. We didn't come here just to sit there and joke around, laugh, and this and that. This is not funny. This is, we have to address this issue. These things, the books, the graphics, this is not inappropriate. Because what they did in West Virginia is, they said, "Yeah, we got a committee. We're gonna look into it." They looked into it, and the next thing you know, they drafted people so they could forget about it. And then they came back and put the books back on the shelves. Now, I don't know what you guys are trying to do. I don't know. Why didn't you take these books out and say, "That's it. We're done with these books." But you guys wanna sit here and just keep the books? You know, instead of you guys taking the six books out, we wouldn't even be here. What's the problem? What's the agenda? What are you getting out of it? What grants have you? I did a FOIA request. I think you guys got it. Fifteen point two-three-one, as amended. And I'm gonna find out everything, and I'm gonna find out what grants you guys, what's it called? Who has a nonprofit organization that's funding you this money? And you guys are sitting here and just, it's getting ridiculous. People got kids out here, okay? I'm not against the gay. I'm not against anything. I'm against the books, okay? Don't sit here and say that people are sitting here, coming to you guys, and just telling you, "Oh, we want these books out." You worried about the gay people? No problem. We're not worried about the gay people. We're worried about our children, okay? And second of all, I don't wanna hear anybody, okay? Sitting there saying, "Oh, you guys are offending the gay." These are kids. They can be eighteen. If they wanna become gay, let them become gay. Who cares? It's not our problem. We don't want kids to have access to these books. It's nice and simple. I'm not gonna address this situation no more. It is. It is what it is. And the only person that's behind this is Rashida Tlaib. Do not vote for Rashida Tlaib. It's nice and simple!
Next speaker is, okay, next. Next, thank you. Next speaker, yep. Next speaker is Mr. Jeff Selfit. He would like to speak to the board about illegal sexual explicit books.
Jeffrey Sala. I'd like to begin by saying thank you for the least acknowledging there is a flawed process and implementing a process. My biggest concern, why is the burden on the parents to find these books? What happens when the parents who don't read or speak English? Why is it on them to try to opt out? They don't know what's going on. How do these books even end up in our library? That's the biggest thing. I mean, these books are really bad. I, when I'm looking at it, I cringe. They don't belong in the hands of thirteen, fourteen, fifteen-year-old kids. I believe there should be a process to review these books before they even get in our schools, not a review process once they're in our schools.
Next speaker is Mr. Ziad Abdul Malik. He would like to address the board on sexually explicit materials and dress code.
I now understand that you have a book challenge in process, book challenge process in place, or I shall say that you had one before, but it wasn't very public to the parents. It is also understandable that there might be some material in the schools which could be considered borderline inappropriate or controversial, depending on one's views. This book challenge has a potential to be a best-case scenario for these types of materials because everybody takes offense to different things in different ways. In regards to the specific material that we saw in the media center, a normal, psychologically sound and stable mind would come to a conclusion that that specific material is nothing but sexually explicit. And this type of material further promotes mental health issues, especially in reflection to self-harm, according to previous studies. I understand today that there are certain elements here in this city, as well as across the nation, making baseless claims which are vilifying parents and are making the issue about everything else except protecting young impressionable minds from filth that most adults shy away from or are uncomfortable reading. This type of material is a definition of things that fell through the cracks. And I understand, in a library of 500,000 books, it happens sometimes, even against best efforts. But that is where we step up and acknowledge our failures and we right our wrongs. These specific books should not be subjected to a book challenge, but outright removed. These are not borderline controversial materials, but outright infectious diseases on young developing minds which have the potential to have these minors seeking psychological help in the future. The school's job is to promote academia, and the parent's job is to raise their children. You are not a daycare, but a core education provider, which we pay our annual subscription fees through our tax dollars. Stick to math, science, history, literature, automotive, and computer technologies, which excites and challenges young minds, which in turn will provide the world with intellects that will lead in breakthroughs, cure disease, be upstanding contributing members to society. So let's focus on raising our rock-bottom test scores in due way with exposing minors to sexually explicit material. You can do better. We can all do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Anne Clark of Dearborn, would like to address the board on books.
I'd like to address the board on a personal note. Last Monday, you were condescending and very disrespectful to the community. You will be held to atonement by your own higher power, but your higher power is us. And I'm going to remind you, and just read what you handed out so nicely today. Dearborn Public Schools believes that media materials containing graphic or gratuitous violence, sexual contact, explicatives, or hate speech without literally or educational merit, educational merit, should not be included in our school media center. And I'm gonna read you that act that you so graciously put in there. Harmful to minors means sexually exploited material that meets all of the following criteria. Consider as a whole, it appeals to the proudest interests of minors as determined by contemporary local community standards. This community. It is patently offensive and local standards of adults as to what is suitable for minors, worthy adults. Local community means that the county in which the material is disseminated. This county. Brutus interest means lustful interest in sexual stimulation or gratification in determining whether sexually excluded matters appears to be prudent interest, and the matter shall be judged with a reference to the average age of seventeen-year-old minors that appears from the character of the matter that is designated to appeal to the proudest interest of particular group persons, including but not limited to homosexuals and sadamists. And then matters shall be judged in reference to average age minors within the particular group from which it appears to be designated. This is a legislative law, and you are not abiding by it. And may God have mercy on your side.
Next speaker is Mr. Najee Al Madhaji. An Fahd Al Maori would like to address the board on school curriculum, as well as age-appropriate materials, and they're in Dearborn.
Assalamu alaikum. Thank you all. So I wanna first start out by saying one thing. Any of the teachers that are here, our beef is not with you. Our beef is with you. So let me get that out of the way. Now, last month, I came to the board meeting for the first time in my life. And we read some of the material that was in these so-called books. The Great Sex App Debate. There's actual reviews about Grindr, saying how good it is. I have used Grindr. The advantages are, you can get what you want quickly. This is from the book. I've met a variety of interesting people through sex apps. They're predominantly used for sex, though. They're sold to us as social networking apps, but we all know what they're really for. I don't have a problem with that aspect of it. If people want casual sex, then something like Grindr is a must. And we read that to you last month. And you looked at us like we were some kind of crazy people speaking to you, like almost like we had nothing to, like we had nothing to say. Now, does anybody need a college education or a PhD to know that this book is not appropriate for kids? Why in God's name do we need to have some complicated process? This is strictly just common sense, guys. How did we get to this point? So when I mentioned this last week, I thought, what's gonna happen is, you guys would be like, "Okay, you know what? You parents, you have, you have a point. We'll work on making our processes more robust. These books absolutely do not belong in the library." But instead, what happened was the exact opposite. We were viciously attacked, social media and beyond social media. Even people like me, people trying to get me fired from work. And yet, at the same time, they are attacking us while at the same time being the victim. And all along, all you guys are silent. What exactly are you doing? So let me say this. Let me say this. I have faith in the great people of Dearborn, okay? The vast majority of people in Dearborn agree with us. We are a compassionate people. We are a tolerant people. We are a faithful people. And at the same time, we are a courageous people. And we're not gonna give up until this issue is finally resolved. And unfortunately, it's not gonna get resolved until you guys are removed from the board.
Next speaker is Mr. Hussain Al Moudawal of Dearborn, would like to address the board on protecting our kids from materials not age-appropriate. Next speaker is Mr. Jason Skidmore, would like to address the board on supporting the freedom to read.
So I had a very different speech planned for Monday night. But sitting in that angry crowd, I kept coming back to this thought of the American cycle. The original revolutionaries fought to secure our independence as a people. They wrote the Constitution to ensure the pursuit of liberty and freedom for their descendants, who then derided the Dagoes, Whops, and Polacks that came 100 years later in search of the same. And they struggled through squalor, formed the unions that would earn them a fair living, allowing them to seek prosperity outside the limits. And from the comfort of the suburbs, their children and grandchildren looked to Mexico, Puerto Rico, looked to the Middle East and said, "No, we don't want you. Go back." And still, you came. You persevered. You built wonderful prosperous community. So now, you find that which you disapprove of, that which you hate, and you choose to subvert that end of community. Now, you can claim this isn't about hate and for a segment of you. Maybe it is purely about the graphic nature of these books. And if it is, I can respect that. But look at the hateful signs that were on display the other night. Consider some of the language that we're seeing picked up from the Christian right who spent years trying to shove the gay back in the closet. Indoctrination, grooming, acceptance of pedophilia. That should be all you need to see this for what it is. It's one woman's crusade to stir up the ultra-conservative element around one trumped-up issue. Come on. These kids weren't reading these books. And use it in a manipulative effort to replace a balanced school board with one tailored to their narrow set of views. That all the way to the top until there are no voices left in this country but theirs. I don't know that she expected such support from the Muslim community, but here they are, apparently fervent in their fear of all LGBTQ, because like I said, it's their turn to embrace the American way. So the school board has done its duty. You've listened to the community's concerns, done your investigation, presented a reasonable program that allows each parent to make these decisions for their kids. And I, for one, won't give up my rights as a father to anyone whose parenting skills are so fragile their teenagers can be undone by ink on a page. It's time for you to draw your line and stand by it. Much of the community will stand with you despite all of this. If you cave and remove these books, they may believe they've won, but it doesn't make them right. History will judge them on that, and it will judge you. This nation does not look back fondly on such efforts to subdue its freedom.
I ask that you please be respectful of every speaker. We have been respectful. There has been respect shown up until now. Please continue to do so. Thank you.
Freedom of speech.
Thank you, Ms. Next, until your turn, when you have the opportunity to speak, you can convey your message. Next speaker is Ms. Louis Jowelli. Sorry, you did not write your name. She would like to speak to the board on supporting the civil rights of all students and giving my time to Nancy DeZasick.
No, we can't do that.
Next, Nancy. Okay. Next speaker is Ms. Mary K. Quibbick, would like to speak to the board on supporting public education.
Sorry, I didn't see my name. My name is Mary K. Kubitschek. I have lived in Dearborn for 55 years. I have taught hundreds and hundreds of Dearborn Public School students over the last 14 years. I have watched my three children graduate from Dearborn Public Schools in recent years, and I pay attention to the school board meetings and to school board elections. And I'm saying all this to give you some idea of the depth of my investment in the effectiveness and success of our schools in Dearborn. These are my children, my schools, this is my community. And my message here today is not for the board, but for my community. I stand here today to represent the teachers, the administrators, the support staff in our schools every single day, the people who are being called names, the same people we have met at open houses and conferences, the same people who are doing their very best to support your children and teach our children, the same people who have huddled in the corners of classrooms with our children, teaching them what to do if a school shooter enters the building, the same people who would place themselves between a school shooter and our children. And these are the people we are attacking. The school board and Dr. Malenko worked around the clock during COVID to protect our children, and we knew absolutely nothing about it. And these are the people we are attacking. Mayor Hamud was called names last week for pointing out what we all know because it was made very clear at the board meeting Monday night that political groups from outside Dearborn are manipulating our community to whip up hate against teachers and administrators and support staff, and especially against our LGBTQ students and staff members. The very same political groups, groups, by the way, who have a history of embracing anti-Muslim ideologies, the very same groups who are doing this in hundreds of school districts in dozens of states, all in the last year. And we know this isn't about the books because the district has pulled the books in question to review. And they're reviewing every single book in every single school library. And they're allowing parents to opt out of any books. And they've created a repeal process. So let's stop pretending this is about protecting children from books. We all know this is about erasing our LGBTQ students and staff. It was literally written on signs people brought to the meeting on Monday. As a community, we need to come together and ensure that those who are different from us are embraced and supported. We need to teach our children that we do not fear people who are different from us, but that we welcome them into our community. We need to ensure our community, our schools, and our classrooms are safe, welcoming environments for every student and every staff member, regardless of their identity, religion, or nation of origin. That's who we should be as a community.
Next speaker is Mr. Next speaker is Mr. Jonathan Cade, would like to address the board on protecting all Dearborn students and faculty, including LGBTQ-plus people.
Please do not speak if you do not have the floor. Be respectful and calm. Thank you.
Jonathan Cade? I hear. Next speaker of Dearborn, Mr. Amru Hazam, would like to address the board on parents' rights in the educational system.
I am a father of Dearborn Public School, of a Dearborn Public School student and a product of Dearborn Public Schools. The majority of parents are not here to attack anyone. We are not here to attack the board. We are not here to attack the LGBT community. And we are not here especially to attack our teachers. We cannot allow extremes on both sides to hijack the narrative. We are here to exercise our parental rights and to hold the board accountable to the highest degree. To the board, we entrust you with our children's safety along with their education. The blatantly inappropriate content in question has no place in our public schools. We have chosen you as our board to protect our children from age-inappropriate content. And all the parents here, yes, there is also a threat to our children from the internet and social media apps such as TikTok, where far worse content exists. However, internet use at home does not absolve the board from being held accountable by parents. We are justified in voicing our concern about normalizing sexually inappropriate content in public schools. To the LGBT community, the majority of parents are not here to attack your right to exist in a free society. But parents also have rights to protect their children. Criticism of age-inappropriate content is not criticism of the LGBT community. However, advocating for such materials to be placed in schools is a violation of parents' rights. Finally, US the board have a duty to repair the trust that has been ruptured between parents and the public school system. And for the person that said that, in the back, I'll repeat what he said. American values and the American way is not child pornography.
Next speaker is Ms. Jane Mazza of DFT 681, would like to address the board on public schools teachers.
Hello. Good evening, Board President and Dr. Malenko and Board Trustees. I'm Jane Mazza, President of DFT 681. DFT 681 has always supported quality public education, supporting a welcoming environment for all of our students and staff. Unfortunately, a political agenda to discredit our hard-working staff and our public school system is what is occurring this evening. This political group has used fear and misinformation to intentionally divide our community and cast negative allegations on the integrity of our staff. I find it puzzling that the community media sources have highlighted and spread the misinformation from this group. The DFT 681 has given back to the community in many ways. Over the past 10 years, we've given out to children in this community over 10,000 books at homecoming and other events. In August of 2021, the DFT was awarded a $90,000 grant to promote back-to-school events. Every Dearborn school benefited from this grant. No community press was given to these events. DFT will continue to bring positive events to all of our children. Everyone can agree that having resources and books in our schools that speak to the diversity of identities and experiences of our students is critical for equality and supportive education. Our community, like many others across the country, is being intentionally, sorry, divided by political players who agenda revolves around anti-public school, anti-public school teachers, not what is best for students. Love and concern that every parent has for their children is being exploited with these false narratives to divide our community for public reasons. I've been a teacher in this community for over 30 years. My children attended and graduated from Dearborn Schools. My grandchildren presently attend Dearborn Public Schools. Please think about the teachers who teach your children. Many of them have their own children attending Dearborn Public Schools. You know them because they attend your churches or mosques and live in this community. They are working hard every day to make sure your child is cared for and educated in the best environment that is welcoming to all, no matter their background, racial, or religious identity. We need to work together, Dearborn. We have a strong parent component. We've always offered classes and support for our parents. Parents should absolutely have an active role in their child's reading and education. But no parent should be able to tell another parent what their child is allowed or not to read.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Mike Hashram of Dearborn, would like to wish, would like to speak to the board on education.
Good evening, board members. Oh, yeah, you're right. First of all, I'd like to tell the teachers that are in the room today, and some of whom I've went through their classrooms, actually, thank you for teaching us, while our beef today, like others have said, it's not about you guys. Good evening, board members. I'd like to ask this body of school board members whether you believe you are using your positions and platforms for future political advantages, or whether you choose this position of influence to defend, advocate, and fight for the needs and concerns of the families and individuals who elected you. Question, are you still standing firm in the statements you made when you were running for and gathering votes for your current positions? I take that as a no. As school board members, it is your duty to do what is right for your community. But unfortunately, that has not been the case. The community attended last board meeting with true concern about their children's education and exposures to explicit material. But unfortunately, this body did not take us seriously. It was only when the community came together and protested to hold the board accountable that this board and administration decided to take action. Although, hold on, hold on. Although there has been a change by your administration, this is a only minor step to a much larger and more complex issue. There is more work to be done. This work can only take place by joining with your community members to discuss the issues, listen to our concerns, engage in open communications, and come together to enforce long-term proactive measures to keep our community and youth safe from material that is in the least way instructive, educational, or beneficial to our youth. This is not a battle between the school board and the community. This is, instead, has to be a collective effort to ensure our children are receiving the educational resources that will further their futures and not further confuse them. Over the past few weeks, I have had multiple parents, religious figures, and organizations contact me, and others who worked on this issue, of their support for this cause we are pursuing today. We're all on the same mission, and that mission is to enrich the minds of our developing children with material that will further their education and future paths. Schools are no place to teach children about the complexity of sexuality, gender identification, or sexually explicit material. Instead, instead...
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you very much for your comments. Everyone is given three minutes. That's the fair way to do it. In the, in the past, we have had people that just go on and on beyond their three minutes. We are being fair to everyone. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Ms. Rula Mackey, No City, would like to speak to the board on education.
I stand here today as a concerned citizen and a concerned parent. I just want everybody to know that my loyalty does not lie to the right or to the left. It lies just to my community and my child and my future children. The past week, we, the movement that is obviously against sexually explicit pornographic material in the libraries, we've been called so many names: Trumpers, MAGA's, extremists, Christian white nationalists, somebody put a picture of us apparently, terror, whatever. And I just want to, and I just want to say something, that if we were anti-LGBT, we would be going after these social clubs in schools. I, from my understanding, there are gay, straight Alliance clubs in the high schools, and if this was an anti-LGBT movement, we would be going after them before we'd go after the books. And I just have a question for people who are Second Amendment supporters. Would you guys be okay with guns and ammo magazine subscriptions in our library? Because it's not age appropriate. And that's what we're trying to make you guys understand. We're trying to make you understand appropriateness is, age appropriateness. These books are obviously inappropriate. They're sexually explicit. They're pornographic. They're disgusting. I'm disgusted just looking at them, let alone read them. The media itself, you know, blurred out the images from these books. So just, you know, just ponder on that for a moment. Thank you for hearing me out.
Next speaker is Mr. Hassan Ali of Dearborn would like to address the board on education.
Good evening. My name is Hassan Ali. I'd like to speak about education. There is no doubt that the argument for public education is a good one. In our diverse society of competing faith and value systems, the promise of education for all remains the great equalizer among individuals and a safeguard of our republic. That's why we tolerate a government monopoly on education, because education for all is necessary for a healthy society on the condition that it serves the common good. On that basis, we place our trust in public schools, that they serve the common good. The argument for public education fails when that condition is no longer met, when parents, the primary stakeholders in public education, fear that public schools are being weaponized in order to push a pernicious political agenda, a set of beliefs and dogmas that seek to indoctrinate students and turn them against their faith or against the values of their families. That is when parents lose trust in public education. Across the country and here in Dearborn, we are witnessing that loss of trust. We've seen political activism encroach upon the public school system, not just in the form of obscene books that masquerade as representation, but in curriculums, in school policies, in political flags and symbols that hang in classrooms, and in activists who abuse their trust to teach objectively and impartially and instead seek to make activists out of their students. Those activists not only betray the trust of their profession, they betray their colleagues, the vast majority of whom are dedicated teachers who serve their students in earnest despite being underpaid and overworked. On behalf of parents, I want to honor our teachers and express our esteem and gratitude for everything they do. As, as the adults in the room, we have a collective responsibility to our children, to posterity, to ensure the education they receive is worthy of their childhood and their inquis- and their inquisitive minds. For that reason, we've submitted a resolution to the board containing sensible and practical measures to affirm the rights of parents to direct the education of their children, to increase transparency in school curriculum and instructional materials.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker.
Next speaker, please.
Mr. Muhammad Muslough of Dearborn would like to speak to the board on education.
Next speaker is Mr. Mustafa Al Karagulli of Melvindale would like to speak to the board on children's rights. It's not about LGBTQ. It's about kids, exposure to sexual content. So is he here to address us? Next speaker is Mr. Jackson Wagner of Dearborn would like to speak to the board on the proposed book ban.
My name is Jackson Wagner. I was born in Dearborn. I've lived here my entire life and I'm a gay man. It saddens me to see our community torn asunder, to see friends and neighbors turn on one another. Diversity has always been Dearborn's strength. Let's never forget that. We have schools to train students to be engaged citizens of a democracy and to coexist with people different from them. How can we teach the next generation of citizens to embrace democratic values like freedom of the press, freedom of speech, and freedom of religion if we betray these principles and deny them these liberties in school? We all...
Please allow the speaker to speak. Thank you. Continue.
We all want children to be safe and we all want them to be well-informed. These goals seem like they are in conflict today, but they don't have to be. We know that sexuality is more or less the same over the course of someone's life, even if how they express it goes through changes. I was born gay. No matter how homophobic my environment was, no matter how much I didn't, I denied it, nothing could change that. It just made me suffer. For many people like me, that pain drove them to suicide. Banning LGBT books isn't going to stop anyone from being gay. It will just make them miserable and alienate them, and the consequences might be fatal. I want everyone here to imagine a time when they felt like everyone around you hated you for who you are. I'm not Muslim and most of you aren't gay, but all of us know what it is like to be mistreated by people who know little about you. Maybe you can hide who you are, but that hurts in a different way. The far right in this country despises us all. What I'm asking for is that everyone have compassion and consider the harm you do to the most vulnerable among us when you stigmatize their very existence. It is the, it is, it is the duty of every community to build a nurturing environment. Even though I had open-minded and supportive parents who instilled in me the value of books and diverse cultures, without a supportive environment, I still suffered. We owe today's students a better community. Let's build that community environment by choosing to discuss difficult topics rather than shying away from them. Let's stand together in solidarity and hospitality. Dearborn should be a city where everyone knows that they are safe and loved and supported.
Next speaker is Mr. Albert.
Please stay calm. Go ahead.
Yep. Mr. Albert Abbas, No City, would like to speak to the board on books. Go ahead, Albert.
Everyone be respectful and calm and allow speakers to speak. Yes, please continue. Everyone be quiet so we can hear the speaker. Be calm and respectful. Thank you. Please go ahead, Mr. Abbas.
Dear respected board members, we have entrusted you to protect our children physically, emotionally, and morally from the evils that threaten us. This is another attempt to confuse our children and make a mockery of Dearborn while destroying the family structure. These, there are other districts that have fallen prey to this filthy material, breaking the barriers that protect the most vulnerable. The issue here is not a religious one, nor is an attack against the LGBTQ community. Is it, it is an issue of age appropriateness. It is an issue of sexually explicit, obscene, and lewd content. Many of us here, many of us here don't care what your sexual preference is, nor do we want to argue about gender identities or if men can get pregnant. What concerns us is that your personal beliefs do not poison the beliefs, our beliefs, our religious duties, or the biological facts. When the schools decided to take God out of the classroom, it was to protect children from being indoctrinated. The same applies here. When you try to please everyone, that simply means you stand for nothing. Coming up with an opt-out-of-books program is not a solution. Taking out the garbage is. When our children are under your watch, it is your duty to protect them from erotica or overly provocative words or graphic porn. We are not talking about public libraries, nor do we agree with censorship. This is not a platform to segregate us based on political affiliation, nor is it a platform to advance political careers, be it school board, city council, or mayoral. We do not care about the ones that try to vilify us in the papers and media, in the media outlets, and history will remember us as, remember us in a positive way. We will not tolerate many of you that make this about political affiliations to get caught, caught up in your backyard brawls, pitting us against each other while you quietly ignore the facts and endanger our children. My affiliation, my affiliation and responsibility is to protect my children and all children from falling prey to the traps of the creeps and pedophiles in this world. This is as black and white as it gets. This determines who will turn their backs on children. Our voices will be heard and this will continue to escalate until our concerns do not fall on deaf ears. We will remember who abandoned us and who stood with truth and dignity. Every one of you will be held liable, held liable in the court of...
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Mr. Brian Stone.
Everyone, everyone, please sit down and let the next person speak. We appreciate you being respectful and calm and allowing everyone their opportunity.
Mr. Stone of Dearborn would like to address the board on book ban policies, safety of LGBTQ students, staff, and parents.
This is not a debate about books. It's a debate about culture. And let's just admit that because...
Be respectful and allow someone...
People who want to ban books about gay people and come up and use words like pedophile to describe gay people, who use words like sexual perversion to describe gay people, you're not trying to ban a book. You're trying to ban gay people. That's what this is about. And it's obvious because the signs are there. And you know what? It's not about pornography either because you printed out eight-foot-tall signs of what you called was pornography and then you showed it to dozens of children at your own rallies. If it's pornography, then the guy holding the sign was showing it to all your kids. Come on, man. Let's talk about what this really is. You hate gay people and it's obvious because look at how you behave when one gay person speaks. Look at how you act and your children are watching.
You guys, Mr. Stone, Mr. Stone, you need, you need to, you need to address the board, you need to address the board and not the audience.
Yes, well, I'd like to also say this. Characters in books deserve to be defended. Every kind of character, gay characters, black characters, every diverse kind of character that can exist in a book belongs in our libraries. And you know what? They belong for one very simple reason, because literature reflects reality.
Address the board, please.
Literature reflects reality. And let me tell you this too. There are people who are adulterers in the real world. There are people who cheat their business partners. There's people who do all kinds of things in books. They're villains. They shoot people. They hurt people. They do dastardly things. And we don't try to ban them from every book. And you know why we don't ban every book that has a villain? Because there's villains in real life. There's people who go out and bully others, who try to shout them down, who pull up signs and shame them and make them feel less than. Yes, villains exist in this world. And if the most wretched villain belongs on the page of a book, then so too does a young gay child or a gay character who's just trying to survive.
I'm asking that everyone be calm and respectful and I want to remind everyone that you need to address the board. Don't address the audience. Address the board.
Next speaker is Ms. Judas Jones would like to address the board on banning books.
Judith, Judith Jones?
Good evening. My name is Dr. Judith Jones. I'm a third generation born and raised in Dearborn. I went off to study, married, and raise my family. I returned in my old age to teach and live near my family. I am not in favor of banning any books in Dearborn. If parents do not want their children to read a book, they should not allow them to do that. But to foist their views of one group of citizens on the rest of Dearborn doesn't work either. This is what Hitler did and we all know how that worked out. As a society, we are richer if we do not limit what others can read. To ban books is to close our minds to learning from people who are different. I'm not going to read the message from my sister, Patricia Hartzorn, a lifelong Dearborn resident. She was at the meeting Monday but isn't able to... She was at the meeting Monday but isn't able to attend tonight. What I love about Dearborn today is our diversity. Diversity is our strength. I appreciate the wonderful staff and students my four children interacted with at Edsel Ford. My kids' friends were from everywhere. I am a member of the American Federation of Teachers Organization at U of M Dearborn. I taught science to over 1,000 teachers in 28 years at U of M Dearborn. Many of my students work in Dearborn Public Schools. My husband taught eighth-grade math at Woodworth. I love teachers. Citizens like me believe in free access to information and a safe, inclusive learning environment for all. Right now, there are people among us trying to divide this community and attack public education. We stood strong against Terry Jones when he came to Dearborn to divide us. "What I saw on display Monday made my heart sink," she says. "Thank you, School Board, Mr. Martin, and Dr. Groover for your hard work. What happened after your presentation was depressing." We all want the same thing. We want children to be supported. We want great schools where children can pursue their dreams. We all want intelligent, strong, and healthy children. To see attacks on our teachers are disheartening. I am here to support our LGBTQ+ community and our wonderful teachers.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Mrs. Stephanie Butler, No City, would like to speak to the Board on Book Review.
So I'm, I'm not gonna go over the books because I, it's beating a dead horse. What I am gonna talk about, though, is slander in libel. So when you take the white woman in the room and then you turn thousands of Arab-American Muslims into white Christian nationalists that are being led off a cliff by a sheep, insinuating that these people, some graduated from Harvard, are a bunch of idiots who can't think for themselves, is disgusting, is absolutely disgusting. And you know it. So let's talk about harassment. Let's talk about the facts. I have not even heard about your librarian from Fortson who put my information and my residence on Twitter to get doxxed, knowing that I have children at home. I filed a report with this body, and I have gotten nothing. Okay, so let's not talk about that, all right? Let's talk about some facts. So there's a little misconception. We're gonna clear that up tonight. Did I send my daughter to the library to check out that book? A hundred percent I did. A hundred percent I did. I knew what was in the book. However, when my daughter got to the librarian, and let me ask you, has this ever happened to another child or is it just my child? Where she was asked if her mother was Stephanie Butler, to which she replied, yes, she is. Okay, well, I can't check this book out to you. Well, why can't you check this book out to me? Because your mom's on social media saying really mean things about me, and I don't feel legally that I can check this book out to you. Wow, so you denied a student. Let's talk facts, okay? We're gonna talk facts. To where I was on the phone with my daughter the whole entire conversation till the time that Ms. Hassan beeped in on the other line, to which she said, Mrs. Butler, just wanted to let you know that your daughter's down here. She's trying to check out a gay book. I said, whoa, 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 stop right there. Ms. Hassan, is this a normal book? Like, it's, it doesn't have any sex scenes, anything like this? Obviously, I knew what was in it. She flipped through it. She said, yeah, it's good. Okay, then let her check the book out. So you guys are slandering my name and pretending that these people have no brains to think for themselves because they don't want porn in the school.
Next speaker is Ms. Fay Namer, No City, would wish to address the Board on Books.
Would you please repeat the name? Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Fay Namer.
Good evening, Board Trustees, respected Board Trustees, Superintendent, Concerned Parents. It is quite disheartening that after so much strife and public outcry, this body has offered abysmal recourse to the parents who have clearly voiced concerns over sexually explicit, obscene, pornographic, and lewd content in their children's school library, a manifestation that subjects this body to criminal offenses under the threat of prosecution per MCL 722, Sections 674 and 675. Further, the books in question are listed among the most challenged and most censored titles nationally on the American Library Association's website. So this phenomenon is not unique to the city of Dearborn, nor its residents. Additionally, the notion that anyone is advocating to ban books is baseless considering that our media specialists are being asked to screen, vet, and curate content for literary consumption, a process they already follow. However, the existence of these books has uncovered deficiencies in the said process. Superintendent, the statement you released was balanced. It addressed the varied sentiments around the topic, but it fell short of bringing much-needed closure to this very sensitive matter. Pursuant to Michigan statute governing the public school system, MCL 380.10, parents are to be viewed as partners in our children's education. Furthermore, the law itself recognizes, the law itself recognizes that it is the natural and fundamental rights of parents to determine and direct the teaching and education of their children. To that end, first and foremost, I urge this body to clearly outline that sexually explicit content will be removed permanently, not temporarily, from the collection and should not have found its way onto school library shelves. Secondly, the release statement puts the burden on the parents to have knowledge of the school library's 300,000 unique book titles, their contents, and their literary value, thereby negating the process of challenging or opting out of specific book titles. This represents a short-sighted proposal which requires a more practical framework. Thirdly, Superintendent, the most important sentence in your release statement is the following. "We are also aware that the vast majority of students in our care are minors, still learning about life in the world, and they are not ready emotionally and intellectually to process some content. I couldn't agree more and hope that we find meaningful closure to this issue so that we can focus on equally important matters. Finally, and most importantly, the issue pertains to the health and safety of our school-aged children and should not be tainted by any political, religious, ideological, or ulterior agendas that said we put our trust in this body to act in the best interest of our students."
Next speaker is Mr. Ahmad Rayashi. Would like to speak to the Board on Sexually Explicit Books.
So I'm gonna start off by making, talking to the community. I hope you guys realize what elected officials have just.
Please address the board.
I hope you guys, that's okay. Hey, stop the time, mother cutting me off. To the community, I hope you realize what the elected officials have just done. They are using ordinances against us, threatening us with arrest, trying to keep us quiet, and trying to stop us from speaking up for our children. This shows their true feelings and regards with this situation. They have metal detectors at the door as if we are criminals. What are they trying to, what are you guys trying to say about us? But you guys allowed Brian Stone to try to incite the crowd, and you guys then cut off his mic. What does that say to you? Let me also make mention of some of the chatter that us residents are hearing. The ones vocal, the ones vocal against the concerned parents of Dearborn, the ones accusing us of being outsiders. Perhaps the most important point that most of our community members may have overlooked is that virtually every single community leader or supposed leader and self-appointed spokesperson that has chosen to condone and/or support the exposure of our children to sexually explicit content in our schools does not, I repeat, does not have children attending our public schools. They have either chosen to have their kids attend private schools, religious or otherwise, or their children have already graduated from our public school system, or they do not, or they do not have children, nor do they live in our community. The bottom line is their kids have been sheltered from the indecency they are subjecting our kids to under the banner of safety, love, and tolerance. That, to me, is a definition of hypocrisy and virtue signaling. We don't want, nor do we need, people tell us how to raise our children. Your job as a board is to ensure the safety and education of our children, not to raise them. We are here to demand that the Board of Trustees hear us and implement our resolutions that we have submitted. Anything short of that is telling us that you feel too comfortable in your positions and that our legal rights do not matter. We are the parents, we, the parents, will not settle for anything less than what we proposed through our resolutions. As I've stated previously, you sit in those chairs through our votes. You sit in those chairs to represent our needs and our interests, not the other way around. Show us anything short of respecting the will of the people, and we will have new community members sitting in those chairs. Hold on, hold on. We don't play politics when it involves our children. Either respect that fully with no compromise, or step down, or get removed. The ball, hold on, the ball is now in your court. Best believe.
Thank you for your comments. May I please remind everybody to, in the best interest of time, we've still got a lot of people that would like to be heard. Can I please remind everyone to line up when you see your names up on the screen?
Next speaker is Ms. Lauren Olson, would like, of Dearborn, would like to speak to the Board on Censorship.
Go ahead. My name is Lauren Olson. I am a lifelong Dearborn resident and graduate of Edsel Ford High School. Reading is a foundational skill, critical to future learning and to exercising our democratic freedoms. Most of us will not travel far from where we were born, but reading helps you see what life is like somewhere else or someone else, or from the perspective of someone very much not like you. Narratives are how humans learn best, and it's why we've used narratives since the beginning of civilization. Narratives help shape our understanding of our world and our place in it. We can trust individuals to make their own decisions about what they read and believe. My parents never really policed what my sister and I read. In middle school, I went to Snow Branch Library constantly, reading a book a day over summer vacation. In high school, I talked about books with many of my teachers, and occasionally we would exchange books we thought the other would like. I never did get my copy of Mouse Vol. 1 back from Mr. Paz. I have read and vehemently disliked Less Than Zero by Bret Easton Ellis, and it didn't even mentally scar me. I'm still an avid reader, and I am such an avid reader because I was allowed to enjoy reading. We should do everything we can to encourage reading among teens and kids. Parents have the right to guide their children's reading, but parents should not be making decisions for other parents' children. Specifically, a small group of parents should not dictate what books other people's children are allowed to read. Just because you personally do not want your kid reading a specific book does not mean that book does not belong in the school library. There is a parent-opt-out form, which means you can keep your child from reading those specific books, and there are private school and homeschool options, but public schools are meant to be for every student from every walk of life. Young people deserve to see themselves reflected in a library's books, like Flamer by Mike Curato. I have read it. It is in no way, shape, or form pornography. It is a semi-autobiographical graphic novel about a young teen boy at a Boy Scout camp the summer before high school, grappling with his realization that he may not be straight, dealing with bullying, worrying about how his father is becoming abusive, and thinking about suicide, and ultimately deciding to live and discovering that his friends, in fact, don't hate him for being gay. It is an all-too-common lived experience for many in the LGBT community, and it lets kids know who may be going through something similar that they are not alone. This book's inclusion is literally about saving LGBT kids' lives. Removing and banning books from public libraries is a slippery slope to government censorship and the erosion of our country's commitment to freedom of expression. The challenge of these books conflates any information about or story about the LGBTQ community with groomers, including the Edsel Ford librarian, for setting up a ban-books display. It's a recent tactic of the authoritarian far-right wing to call any part of, anyone part of the LGBT community or their allies child molesters. This isn't even an original take on homophobia. It's very old hat in this country to call any queer person a child molester with no evidence other than being part of the LGBT community. It's bigotry, plain and simple. And I, generally, I just believe kids should be allowed to have freedom of reading.
Next speaker is Cliff Alloway of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the Board on Age-Inappropriate Books in Our School Libraries.
May we have the mic on, please? Try bringing it closer to you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, Verizon. 2022, it's been a real interesting year. I really was not expecting to be standing here. I'm an avid reader. I'm a product of these Dearborn Public Schools. Stout is my junior high school, which I attended. You'll find my family with books where curled up in any corner, always reading. I never thought I'd stand to boycott or to ban books, and yet here I am. I never imagined I would be standing in front of a board telling them that they do not have the interests of my child in their minds, and yet here I am. I read one of the books, and I was very surprised to find a graphic novel, as she just spoke about, of children gathered to masturbate, excuse my language, everybody, to masturbate into a bottle with the person who does not participate, must drink whatever is in that bottle. Another part of the book talks about children taking wieners and putting it up their. I'm a 43-year-old man, and I'm embarrassed to say this stuff. And yet you say it's okay for this to be in the hands of my children. Shame on you. Like I said, I'm a product of these Dearborn Public School teachers, and my teachers, Ms. Bristol, Ms. Holmes, Ms. Gruce, if I had uttered any of these words, would have grabbed me by my ear, dragged me to the sink, and washed my mouth out with soap. And how I wish they were here today to drag each one of you to that sink and wash your mouth with soap. Shame on you. Shame on you. Shame on you.
Next speaker is Ms. Next speaker is Ms. Yasmeen Almauri. Would like to speak to the Board on Age-Inappropriate Books in Our Libraries. Ms. Yasmeen Al.
Would you please repeat the name?
Yasmeen Almauri, not here. Next speaker is Ms. Nicole McLean of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the Board on the book issue. Next speaker is Mr. Hassan Nahmi. Would like to speak to the Board on Sexually Explicit Materials and Books. Next speaker is Mrs. Crystal Paulson, No City. Would like to speak to the Books on the Me Too. Mr. Speaker. Next speaker is Mr. Harry Salih. Would like to speak to the Board on No Hate Speech. Next speaker is Dr. Sterniak of Canton. Would like to speak to the Board about Respect We Owe Our Children. Mrs. Vivian C., it doesn't say the last name, of Canton would like to speak to the Board on Our Children's Safety and Parental Rights. Over here.
Yes, they have the right to speak. They just have to identify from where they're at. Thank you. at. Thank you.
Assalamu alaikum. You know, talk about diversity. I was born in the country of Brazil. Twelve years old, I was working on a factory nine hours a day. I was working for an hour and a half just to pay for my bus trip, two buses to work and two buses to go home. Actually, not home, because I went to night school. And you know what? In my street, I played together with the Asian, with the black, with the white, whatever was there, we played together. I never heard about separation in Brazil. We were all the same, all barefooted, kicking soccer balls, which were not really soccer balls. We got old socks from our fathers, and we put paper inside, and we played soccer. As you know, we are very good at soccer in Brazil. Anyhow, I came to the United States, and I have five graduate degrees. I taught elementary level, junior high, high school, college, graduate classes in college, and I love my students. Everyone who comes to my classroom, I teach. And, but there is one thing. If anyone comes to my class and shows me a picture that's in this book, out of the class that student goes. And you know what else? You know what else? Parents are in charge of their children. We need... We must respect them. Every time my boys, three engineers, when they were in school, they came, all my teachers, and no, you listen to your teacher. And I knew, at that time, teachers respected the parents. And the Board needs to respect the parents.
Next speaker. Next speaker is Dennis Duggan, would like to speak to the Board about the importance of experts. Dennis Duggan. Next speaker is Javana Williams, would like to speak to the Board of Dearborn, would like to speak to the Board on separation of church and state, history of Dearborn.
Oh, hold on just a moment. They called your name and you missed, you were delayed, or?
I was waiting.
Okay, I'm sorry for the confusion. What is your name, please? Viviani, would you please go back to him, trustee, or her, I'm sorry, trustee Mosel?
Yeah, we did have you, so go ahead.
Good evening. I would like to address the Board and say that I'm not from the community, but I'm from Canton, and the reason I came was because we need to support all the parents. The children are in jeopardy all around the country. It's very clear from, from the many ways, the children are being attacked with the ideology, the sexual ideology that's perverting the schools. And this is not only in the schools, it's all over with Proposal Three, the way that's gonna be embedded in the Constitution of Michigan, that parents will have no say, will have no rights in their children's option to go and get castration, sterilization. So it all starts here in the schools. It is being embedded, it's coming, it's sneaking into the families, and it is very concerning. Being from Canton, I see this as an issue that doesn't affect just Dearborn, it affects all of us. Because if Dearborn, with the supports and everyone that you see here tonight, if Dearborn falls, the entire country will fall. We will have no place to go. And as an immigrant, like a lot of us here, where do we go? Where? Where do we hide? Do we go to Canton? Do we go to Dearborn Heights? Do we go back home? As some people here have said, these are not American values. This is not how we were founded. This is not how it should be. You need to repent. Everyone here need to repent and allow the children to, to be kids, to learn. We're the academics. My daughter, Isabella, was the one that was set the Pledge of Allegiance. She loves this country, we love the country, and we all value education. I know a lot of people here, they value education, they've been to college, and it all starts here, with the public schools. So why don't you focus on education? Where is the math? Where is the reading? Where is the history? Where are the strong values that we all came here seeking? Where is that? That's the question. I want you to go tonight, and when you lay your head on the pillow, I want you to ask that. Where are those values? And if Dearborn falls, where do we go? Thank you.
Next, next speaker is Ms. Javana Williams, would like to speak to the Board on separation of church and state and history of Dearborn.
I come to you today as a longtime citizen of Dearborn. I've lived here over 20 years. I am a parent of a student in Dearborn Public Schools. My son and my husband are with me. I come to you as a community member. I love all of you. I really do.
Please address the Board.
Nope, that's all, that's all I have to say to the public, is that I love my neighbors. That's it, I'm back to you. Okay? However, I do disagree with them, and that's okay, too. Okay? I want to say that to the Board that there are a lot of 18- to 20-year-old voters, it's not just the people in this room. I'm gonna tell you that the yellers and screamers and shouters have scared away a lot of innocent young queer kids. They have made them terrified. And I come to you today as a mother, as a member of this community, as a wife, a mother, a queer mother, and a citizen of this fine city. Some of us may not be old enough to remember... I'm gonna pull up his names, I wanna get it right. Orville Hubbard was a segregationist who took great pains to keep people like us apart. And that is not what this community stands for. We really want to stay together, but the only time I ever hear people say the word pedophile, or filth, or disgusting, is when they're talking about people like me. And as a woman, who always has to fight for their right to exist, as a black woman who always has to fight for their right to exist, as a queer person who has always had to fight for their right to exist, I am sick and tired of people telling me to go off and be whatever I am somewhere else. I am not going anywhere. I am sick of the only books that my son can read are about slavery and lynching, things that I find disgusting. Those are things that I hate. Those are things that I find unacceptable. But we are always reading about those things. We never get to read about love, kindness. If it bleeds, it leads. Anything that gets shot, anybody's time, somebody gets in a car accident on Beach Daily or Gully, it's the first thing on the news. If a lesbian couple gets married down the street, you never hear about it. Quiet, it is my turn.
Please address the Board, and please be respectful of the speaker.
Books are media. Quiet. Reclaiming my time. I want five seconds back.
Please continue, please continue now.
I will not be shouted out by people who are of a faith other than mine.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Dylan Wegnia of Garden City, would like to speak to the Board on book banning Next speaker is Ms. Erin Burns of Dearborn, would like to speak to the Board on library
Good evening, Superintendent Malako and our Board members. Thank you for your service to our community. I know you don't have an easy job, so I appreciate the work that you do, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I'd like to start by saying unequivocally that I support our LGBTQ+ community, I always have and I always will. And I appreciate the courage of our members of that community who have spoken here tonight. I really do appreciate you. You know, in Dearborn, we talk a lot about being a diverse and inclusive community, and I would like to see us live into the best of who we are by living into and realizing those values. And if we are to be a truly welcoming and inclusive community, that has to include our LGBTQ+ community members. It has to. I'm speaking, thank you. As a longtime educator, I know from experience that school and education is not just about making sure that our kids get A pluses on their tests and their papers. Holistic, true, fundamental education is about making sure that our kids are going out into the world as critical thinkers and as adults with open minds and open hearts. And we have the opportunity, as adults in this community, to set that example and to live that example for our kids. I would encourage everyone to do that. Some of the language that I've heard describing the LGBTQ+ community has been incredibly harmful, and some of the books that folks are seeking to remove from the shelves, not to not have their own kids read, but to keep any child from having access. Some of those books will save the lives of our LGBTQ+ kids because they mirror their lived experiences and what they're dealing with. I'm speaking, thank you. My time is not up. Thank you, I'm speaking. Thank you. I am speaking, thank you. Again, I would encourage everyone to live into the best of who we are, to be the diverse and welcoming community that we claim to be and that we absolutely can be. Thank you to our Board members for your time tonight, and thank you to our educators, our librarians, who I trust and respect. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Jim Downey of Dearborn Heights, would like to address the Board on books.
My name's Dylan, I was before Erin, can I still speak?
What was your name?
Dylan.
Just one moment, we're gonna find the card.
Good evening.
Yeah, go ahead.
Hold on just a moment, because we missed this gentleman that was called first. Yep.
Go ahead, Dylan.
Good evening, Governing Board, our Superintendent. My name is Dylan Wiegela. I am a high school teacher here in Dearborn at Dearborn High, speaking as an individual. I love this community, and I love my students, and I will fight for them every day of my life. A couple statistics I want to start with. Forty percent of the homeless youth in our country are LGBTQ+. LGBTQ+ youth are three to five times more likely to complete suicide. I bring this up because when I think about my classroom, I want this to be a space where everybody is welcome, regardless of race, nationality, immigration status, religion, sexual orientation, gender identity, you name it. My students, I believe, have always felt welcome. For everybody in this room, I will, no matter what student comes into the classroom, I have their back, and my students know that. But students don't feel safe in our schools. Look at Monday. They don't feel safe. We're worried about indoctrination when our staff isn't even comfortable enough to be out in public to our stu-, our schools. Our students aren't comfortable being out. At my high school, the Gay-Straight Alliance poster has been ripped off the wall in my school five times last year. Our posters vandalized. This is about more than books, because if it was about books, the main book, this book is gay, was actually never checked out by a Dearborn student, ever. Period. It wasn't, not one time. The book, the main book of concern, Ask the District, has not been checked out. So what are we talking about? It has not been checked out. This is greater. This is a greater thing going on in our country. It is an attempt to destroy our public education. There is a movement to discredit what we are doing. We need to stand together and fight against that. There's a movement to privatize your schools, to have charters come in here so that people can make a profit off of it. I've seen it, I've taught in other states. I've taught in Arizona, where people are making millions of dollars off of public education money. We need to make sure we protect against that. We need to make sure that our students feel safe. I have one last thing. If it's really not about the LGBTQ+ community, if it's really not about that, then I should be able to hang this flag in my classroom tomorrow with no problem. This is not political. It says, "Everybody is welcome here." If everybody's welcome, they should be welcome here, though.
Next speaker is Mr. Jim Downey of Dearborn Heights, would like to address the Board on books.
Good evening. You don't need a flag to be inclusive. I've been an educator for over 20 years. I've gone through the Dearborn School District. I taught in the district for eight years. I love my profession, I love my fellow teachers, I respect you guys, but I have to emphasize that there's nothing extreme about objecting to obscene content. I've heard a lot of comments about how the LGBT community has been mischaracterized and terrible things said about them. We're all against that, but I've also seen disparaging remarks made about the people here protesting the obscene content. That is not extreme. There is nothing in the least extreme about not wanting that material being promulgated onto minors, and I'm gonna ask that that needs to stop. There's nothing extreme. I'm not an extremist. I'm not a right-winger. Most of the people here are concerned about their kids. Don't mischaracterize them, don't disparage them. And to my extreme disappointment, I've seen it coming from employees of the district. Employees of the district disparaging the people that pay their salaries, that is inexcusable. We're people here concerned about the children. That's what all, that's what binds us together here. This is not an anti-gay issue. We embrace all of the kids in the school system. We want them to feel welcome. We want them to feel safe. This is an issue that is addressing decency. Let's focus on that issue. I hear a lot of platitudes about freedom and liberty being somehow in danger. It's not. This is an issue about decency. Focus on the issues. And for those of you who are very committed to these books, if you believe in those books, defend the merit of those books. I appreciated the woman who came up here earlier and talked about one of the books and actually explained, put, gave some context to it. Okay, that's fine, we can talk about that, but don't call us extremists, don't vilify us, don't tell us that your liberty's a threat. It's not. This is an issue about decency. I thank you for the opportunity to speak, thank you so much.
Next speaker is Mr. Mustafa Mortada of Dearborn, would like to speak to the Board on problematic books in elementary classrooms.
Good evening. I bring to you greetings of peace. I am a parent of two beautiful children in Dearborn Public Schools, both in elementary. Our son, who was in the fourth grade last year, stumbled into a book in the classroom library. I was going to mention the title, but decided not to, to avoid further commotion in this meeting. Basically, this book is about a kid coming to terms with his sexuality, and the book shows a sexually inappropriate image. When seeing this image in the classroom, our son, aged 10, came to us... came to us that same day and reported to us what he had seen. We had no doubt that this book was intentionally placed in the classroom by the teacher. Was this book pulled from the classroom? I don't know. Can a child attending that classroom now opt out? I don't know. Now, there's this notion by politically motivated instigators, among them, a member of our city council, Erin Burns, who just spoke a bit ago, egregiously claiming that this is an issue with folks that identify as LGBTQ. Well, I would like to redirect this narrative by saying that placing such books in our school and classroom libraries is an infringement on our inalienable rights to religious freedom and conscience, and more immediately, on the rights of our children to be protected from material with sexual themes. This book placement, among many others, is an attempt to inculcate sexual exploration to our children. To us as parents and to an overwhelming majority of parents in this district, this is unacceptable. We demand respectfully that the DPS Administration and School Board take the resolution submitted to the Superintendent Dr. Maleko for parental rights seriously. We will not allow our children to be exposed to such material in a space we expect to be safe for our children, our schools. Needless to say, we appreciate the tireless dedication by the school staff. We understand it is an immense challenge for teachers, day in and day out, to care and teach our children. For the vast majority of you who do so without any hidden agendas, may you be blessed. Also, we appreciate the diversity in our city. But in order for diversity to truly exist in harmony, one group must not transgress the rights of another group. This was a transgression of our rights as parents and the rights of our children, and this is a red line. Thank you.
May I please remind, may I please remind everyone to do not mention names? Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Muhammad Harharah of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on teaching our kids. Muhammad? I hear. Next speaker is Amin Zric of Dearborn. Would like to speak about constitutional matters.
Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, School Board. First and foremost, I wanted to express my gratitude for allowing me to speak to the School Board in regards to this matter. But there seems to be huge misconception in terms of what the matter really is. The matter isn't about the suppression of sexual orientation, political affiliation, or whatever it may be. It's about the graphic material strictly, whether or not that material passes constitutional muster under state and federal constitution. It's pretty straightforward. First and foremost, it's pretty alarming, the fact that these books had already made their way into the curriculum and into the public school libraries without any sort of vetting system. There has to be a vetting system, something that regulates, something that keeps the books to a certain standard. A standard that's not established by federal discretion, but a standard that's completely, unequivocally based and reflective of the Michigan Legislature's intent of what's afforded to protecting our students regarding obscenity and the material within the books itself. Another matter I wanted to bring up is the School Board. You have something, first and foremost, that's incredibly important. It's called fiduciary duty towards your students. Students, it's not even debatable. They spend more than half their day at schools. Maybe involved in extracurricular activities, doing extra studies in libraries, whatever it may be. They spend over 50% of their day in school. And there's a concept called locos parentis, under a legal doctrine, that you are technically responsible in servitude of the parent's interest while they're at school. The fiduciary duty they you owe to these students is a duty of loyalty and duty of care. And the very issue here is to make sure that there is an independent committee that is formed and that does reflect the very protections that are granted by the state constitution under MCL 722, Section 673, to the very students in making sure and ensuring that they are not exposed to early-on obscenity material that may later on cause issues to their mental health or possibly other issues at home. Lastly, I'd like to say that I'm a proud product of Dearborn Public Schools. I remember Mr. Maleko in Salina Elementary made my way through Fortin High School. Now I'm a lawyer. And I could say that I'm very proud to have been a product of this actual school system. But the fact that it took a parent to discover that these books have been already circulating for over years within our Dearborn Public School System is highly alarming and concerning and makes us question whether or not the Dearborn Public School Board is fit for the very duties they are voted to commit and uphold to the community itself. Thank you for your time, and I hope you keep that in mind, that it's your responsibility to provide a conducive environment, a learning environment for students, and to make sure that they're protected from the obscenity material that's actually circulating within the school system today. Thank you.
Next speaker is Hassan Shami of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on library books.
Good evening, my name's Hassan Shami, Dearborn resident. I ditched my speech because there's been so many wonderful brothers and sisters here that let their voices be heard. Um, I want to speak directly to President Roxanne McDonald. Dr. Roxanne, President Roxanne, we know that if there's any issues here, somebody disturbing the peace, you need to ask the police to escort them out. That's why they did not escort the person here who was talking to the crowd for up to two minutes before you asked them to direct to the board. Shame on you, President Roxanne McDonald. Roxanne, we also need to tell you that you serve this community. And we know there are some media outlets here waiting to smear the Muslim community. And you allowed that to happen because you know there was gonna be a reaction between these inflammatory remarks here and the people in the crowd because how sensitive this issue is. So shame on you. To my fellow community members, I'm so proud to be a part of this community with you guys. But please understand that there are people planted here to create a reaction from you, for the media. So be cautious, stay patient, and remain calm. And since there was a recent rant in the beginning for three minutes that mentioned the founding fathers in America, I also want to say that the founding fathers fought for freedom of religion. So on behalf of the Muslim community, I want to congratulate you on the birth anniversary of Prophet Muhammad, which is this week.
Next speaker is Mr. Muhammad Musa of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on books.
Salaam alaikum. A few speakers stated that they don't want Dearborn to become disunited. I don't know about you, but this looks like unity to me. My name is Muhammad Musa, and I was born and raised in Dearborn, Michigan. I attended McDonald Elementary School, Eunice Middle School, and both Dearborn and Fortin High School. As someone who has once walked the hallways of both Dearborn and Fortin High, I stand with the majority of the community members who are here today to voice their concerns, to voice their concerns about the inappropriate and sexually explicit books within our public school libraries. I've heard some people say that parents need to raise their children better, and others stated that this content can be found online. But this does not negate the fact that these books are still inside our public school libraries. A passage from one of these books states, and I quote, "I've met a variety of interesting people through sex apps. They are predominantly used for sex, though. They are sold to us as social networking apps, but we all know what they are really for." End quote. The author then continues to talk about a variety of apps that children and students could use to meet up with strangers and have sex with them. Would you want your children to read this type of book? Would you want your children to download these types of apps? Would you want your child to meet up with a stranger and have sex with them? If not, then listen to the community. Listen to the majority. Listen to the people who put you in the seats that you're currently sitting on. Don't put the books on the shelf. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Khalil Uthman of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on explicit books in the school library.
Good evening. First of all, thank you to all the parents. Thank you to everyone who took the time off and come over here to express their concerns. Second, we believe in democracy. The minute we voted you in here, your title changed from candidates to trustees. But apparently, you broke that trust. These books, these books that are in concerns have been in our libraries since 2019 through a Sora collection purchase via Wayne County. And this is something that we have to talk to the McCommissioner of Wayne County, how these purchases are taking place. But the process that Dr. Glenn Maleko proposed, apparently, it's been in practice, in place before. So that process failed. That process failed to vet these books and remove them from our libraries. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time talking about libraries and the books in the libraries. But I want to mention, this process is so complicated and it's not gonna serve our community whatsoever. And if it's good, it could have been prevented these books from coming to our libraries back in 2019. One thing that I have to highlight, and a lot of people repeated the same thing. This is not anti-LGBTQ. This is not anti-any community. This is not anti-any groups. But apparently, one thing that we noticed tonight, everybody that came over here and stood for the books and supporting these books to be in our libraries, 90% of them are teachers in our schools. They are paid by our tax-paying dollars. They are speaking the same narratives, which proves to me, there is a rumor yesterday that there was a note that was sent out to them to come, our email, that to come and speak about these books to be in our libraries. We are paying for their salaries. We love them. I have five kids, and all of them, they go to Dearborn Public Schools. I expect every single employee or district employee to take a stand on this. At least, look at the books and see what are the sexual explicit contexts are saying. This is not about any, any, any group or any community. We are talking about porns in our schools. We stop sexualizing our kids. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jamar Al-Jahmi of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on books in the libraries. Next speaker is Matthew Rapparino. Would like to speak to the board on legality of those books and materials, as well as the board's legal obligation to protect the children.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks to everyone in the audience. I stand here fascinated by what I'm watching tonight as we watch the School Board construct a narrative that is completely false. Many people stand here and say, "We want to protect our parental rights." And this is nothing about the teachers. They support the teachers. And they say, "We are not opposing LGBTQ rights." And then yet, other people come up here to support the books solely for the purpose of LGBTQ rights. And yet, as a school board, you allowed someone to stand here for three minutes and disparage the Muslim faith. You did not stop it. You allowed another person to come here in front of the media for three minutes and incite the crowd. President McDonald, you did nothing to stop it. On Monday, you shut down this audience and these parents from speaking. And some people have talked about it, and I will remind you. MCL 380.10 states it is the natural fundamental right of parents and legal guardians to determine and direct the care, teaching, and education of their children. Fundamental right of the parent to direct the teaching of their children. The statute then says the public schools of this state serve the needs of the pupils by cooperating with the pupil's parents and legal guardians to develop the pupil's intellectual capabilities and vocational skills. And you failed every parent in the way you violated their fundamental rights on Monday to speak and the way you've treated this issue. The fundamental rights of the parents is a huge issue right now in this country and across this state. The ability of the parents to direct to you what they want taught in these schools. And some people stand up here and say, "We shouldn't ban these books because no one has ever checked them out." That doesn't mean people haven't read them or students haven't read them in school. What you're doing right now in this state, in this board, is over-sexualizing children. And you're doing it for political reasons. And you have an Attorney General right now in this state, Dana Nessel, who says she wants to put a drag queen in every school. And you're allowing it to happen. I say to you, it's time to stop with the political nonsense. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mr. Ali Shajra of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on books.
Salaam alaikum, rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Hi, my name is Ali Shajra. I am a student of Salina School. I'm pleased to be here. I have some words and thoughts I would like to share. I hope during this meeting and future meetings, there is an Arabic translator and other language translators so others can understand on what those meetings are about. I think it's best if there is websites and other language, letting others know whatever being said or decisions made by the board. I believe that instead of teaching us things that will hurt our feelings and our parents' beliefs, we should be taught subjects that we will benefit from, like technology, computer skills, languages like Arabic, Spanish, French, and other things like that. We need to learn what we will need in the future and what will build America. Parents should be told what will be given to their children, especially if it's against their religion and not okay with Christians, Muslims, and other religious beliefs. So parents can have trust when their parents are gone for seven hours a day. And lastly, please think about us. We are the children of this generation and future parents of more children. I hope our education doesn't relate to politics. Please let us live our childhood. Thank you for letting me speak.
Next speaker is Mr. Wadi Azaba of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on books.
Salaam alaikum, eyoohal muslimun. And good evening, members of the Board of Education. At the front end of this issue is explicit sexual material made accessible or taught to students, which is illegal in Michigan law, Section 722.675, titled "Disseminating, Exhibiting, or Displaying Sexually Explicit Matter to Minors." But let's be very clear that at the core of this issue is an ideological battle. And it seems like, and I hope I'm mistaken in my assessment, that some members of this board have inclined towards an insane liberal LGBT ideology that holds many fanatical views, but not so deranged as the idea that pornography is good and students should have access to pornographic material in school as part of education? And I don't accuse you of holding these stances. However, the way that you've handled it so far is somewhat doubting. The book-challenging process you presented is, I'm sorry, a joke. Because any pornographic books on any sexuality, whether on homosexuality, incest, pedophilia, zoophilia, or other forms of sexual perversions is illegal and should never been on our shelves to start with. And what's extremely upsetting, what's extremely upsetting is that people like Abdullah Hamud and the lady, what's her name, Rashida or something, and the other goblins influencing them want to propagate this as an issue. Quote, he says, "Children having the tools to create their own future." This is pure shenanigans. Because you would allow materials on incest, zoophilia, or pedophilia for the same reason. So this is not about, quote, he says, "Our..." So this is not about, quote, he says, "Our libraries serving a gateway to knowledge, imagination." This is ridiculous. This is about where we draw the line and the moral corruption that the majority of us in Dearborn frankly and proudly don't accept. This is about the deliberate targeting of students. This is about the deliberate targeting of students with certain toxic indecent content of an insane ideology that students must not be around. And the reality is, the proponents of LGBT liberal ideology here and elsewhere are fine with democracy as long as people vote for their fanatical views. And as long as it supports their wicked agendas. If people vote against their views, the liberal authority blocks the democratic process and imposes the LGBT liberal positions on the populace. They are Hitler. They are the oppressors. They are radical extremists. Ladies and gentlemen, Board of, members of the Board of Education, if democracy matters, we are the majority here in Dearborn. Let us draw the boundaries on appropriateness. And I urge you not to fuel the tensions and to truly support the majority decisions of families, students, and parents in Dearborn regarding what is appropriate content to allow or teach in our schools. And as far as we're concerned, our unity here is a blessing from Allah subhanahu wa ta'ala. And through this evil, we're able to know who to vote in or out.
Next speaker is Ms. Kathy Martin of Dearborn Heights. Would like to speak to the board on welcoming all our students.
May I also please remind people again, do not use names.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Martin, and I've worked in Dearborn for 20 years. As educators, our main roles is, one of our main roles is to advocate for students. In advocating for students, we also advocate for parental collaboration. And we want parents involved in their own education. So I'm really happy to see so many people have turned out. And I hope to see every one of my students' parents at parent-teacher conferences this year. Becoming an educator is a calling. If you ask most educators, many will tell you that they knew their career path at a very young age. I personally knew by the time I was in second grade. We enter the field knowing that we are in a lifetime commitment to young people. We were called to enter a field where we are paid less than professionals with the same level of education. We were called to enter a field that takes us away from our own children so we can tend to your children. We are called to enter a field where we are underappreciated and overworked. In addition to teaching, reading, writing, math, and history, we teach kids how to get along, how to solve problems, and how to be good citizens in a democracy. This is a labor of love. We do this because we have been called to be here. Our career is our purpose. We signed up for the good, bad, and ugly. We did not sign up to be political pawns. I can't stand idly by while public education is vilified for political gain. I've seen a quote stating that students who are loved at home come to school to learn, and students who aren't come to school to be loved. We are here to teach, love, and accept all children, all staff, and all families. The only way for a child to learn and grow is to first feel safe. And I promise, your child will be safe in my presence regardless of their background or family structure. Public school is where every single person who walks in feels safe and cared for. When we are safe and cared for, when the kids are safe and cared for, they will flourish and grow into happy, productive adults.
Next speaker is Mr. Mohammed Shajra of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on books.
Salaam alaikum, rahmatullah. I think so, all of us here is speaking English. Yes, some family at home, they don't understand English. Because that, I will speak Arabic. And I will try to translate to English. It's a family, don't be laughing. It's not funny. I have a couple questions for you. I, Mr. Hassan, you're speaking Arabic. Adel, you're speaking Arabic. You can't translate to him later. Maybe because we need that. نحتاج أولاً إلى قانون يجرب تدريس الكتب هذه في المدارس. لماذا المدارس؟ لماذا المدارس؟ تمام؟ وما الهدف منها حتى تستهدف بالكتب؟ هل أكتملت المكتبات بالكتب المفيدة حتى تضيفوا كتب مخله غير عقلانية؟ وهل في قانون يحدد العمر لقراءة هذه الكتب؟ الأهالي يحتاجون يحافظوا على أولادهم. هل تفكرون بمشاعر أبناءنا أولاً وبناتنا والأهالي؟ هل تفكرون بقلق الأهالي عند ذهابهم إلى المدارس؟ أبناء وبنات يدرس الأبناء في المنازل ويعلم في المنازل على شيء. وأنتم تريدون أن تعلمهم على الفسد. وهذا لا يتطابق وقد يسبب مشاكل عند الأبناء والطرابات في التعليم. هل تدعمكم أو ترشيكم بعض المؤسسات حتى تبيعوا أبناء الجالية؟ إذا كان، إذا كان شراءكم بالمال تبيعوا، فنحن نعرف لمن نصوت. أخواني، أخواتي في الداخل وخلف الشاشات. نحن عصرنا هذه الفاء التي أمامنا. فلا تضحيوا بأبناءكم لكي يفوز الشخص، سواء كان من الحزب الديموقراطي أو الحزب الجمهوري حتى تدرسوه جيداً. لأن فوز الشخص قد يخسركم خسارة أبناءكم كامل. فاختاروا الشخص المناسب في المكان المناسب أولادنا كآمريكيين. آمريكيين بيض وسود وعرب كلنا ضد هذا الكتب. والسلام عليكم.
Next speaker is Mr. Hamid Fawal of Detroit. Would like to speak to the board on books. Next speaker is Brandy Ahmed. Would like to speak to the board on community support of Dearborn.
Good evening, board members. My name is Brandy Ahmed. I am a resident here in Dearborn, and I have three children here in the Dearborn School District. I'd like to start off, I'd like to thank you all for sitting up here and taking the heat and the criticism. It takes a very thick skin to do that. So thank you. I appreciate that. I'd like to thank our mayor, Mr. Abdullah Hamud, who has made it very clear that no matter what, he will protect books at all costs. And every book will remain in our libraries here in the city of Dearborn. So thank you for that. I'm not gonna really speak too much about the book banning here within the school district. What I really wanna focus on is, a lot of our LGBTQ members in our community, including students, are watching. And, you know, a lot of people are saying, "We're not making it about them." We're, you know, "We're not trying to reject them. We're not canceling them out." But we've had people stand up here and say, "I am a gay person." And you hear the boos, and you hear some of the explicit's, and it's heartbreaking. You cannot say that it is not about that. And so really, my message today, and I'm gonna read it. Also, I'd like to give a shout-out to our Dearborn High School marching band who got all ones this week in festival. So let's recognize that as a positive here in our district. My message in common today is for the LGBT community and students. Like I said, many have said that this isn't about them. But seeing signs like "Leave your dirty books in the closet" and other hateful remarks that have been made here and online, we, and I say "we" as a community because we are a community. We have all the local news stations here. We have national reporters here. They look at us as "we," Dearborn, one community. So I will say "we" when I am, when I am speaking in regards to all of us. We clearly are still witnessing and displaying dehumanizing behaviors of hate and unacceptance. Some are loud and proud, and some are just outright mean. And then we have some that are really trying to look at both sides and, and listen. I really, I have a family with multiple LGBTQ members in it. And we are proud of that. But I've watched a lot of people struggle, and I've watched people that I love struggle, and to the point of suicide. It is devastating. And so what I wanna say to our LGBT community members who are listening, to the students who are listening and watching this, you are seen. You are important. You matter. You have worth. And I encourage them to continue to be authentically and peacefully themselves. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jojo Grimmel of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on transgender and queers in DPS.
Hi, I'm Jojo. I'm an alumni of DPS, and I started working at a school running a before and after-school program. I am queer and transgender. More specifically, I am non-binary, and I use they/them pronouns. While this is a huge part of my overall identity, and I am very proud to be queer and transgender, it is not my entire identity. When you are young, it is incredibly difficult to be unable to put names to what you're feeling and experiencing. It was only very recently I was able to put the name to the cold, lonely, and isolating feeling I get as gender dysphoria. Had I been aware of the books and resources available to students in the libraries, I have no doubt I would have had an easier time accepting myself and relating to other individuals.
Please allow the speaker to speak.
Being LGBTQ plus is not a choice. And it is so hard to have your mind stuck in a body you feel isn't your own, while people hate you for the very thing out of your control. People who don't know the first thing about you, only that you're different from them, so you must be evil. I honestly don't wanna be here, but I know what it's like to have been a queer and trans student and now a staff member. I personally found a way to deal with the blatant transphobia I faced as a student through my peers and staff members, even though I still deal with it on a daily basis. I refuse to let other children be traumatized in the same way I was. I need to fight for the queer and transgender kids because I was one of them, and I didn't have anyone in the system fighting for me. I'm 19, and I'm so tired, I feel it in my bones. But I will not give in to the hatred. We are here, we are queer, and we're not going anywhere. LGBTQ plus people will keep existing in the world whether or not you want to erase our existences. And if you take these books out of schools, where children are sent to learn, you are aiding and endangering LGBTQ youth's lives. I stand firm in what I believe, and I will not back down. It's as simple as not buying mustard if you don't like it. If you don't wanna read it, don't check it out. If these books are banned, the only other alternative would to be to turn to the internet, a wildly vast place full of misinformation and bigotry. These books written by queer and transgender authors for queer and transgender kids are the most reliable and safe options. My question is, why would you take this resource from kids who need it? Don't pretend you're all doing this for anyone except yourselves. You aren't protecting your children. You're all...
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Abdul Nasr Al-Najjar of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on book selection.
While we're waiting for that speaker, I just wanna say one thing real quickly. We are all human up here. We're doing the best we can. We make mistakes. Please understand that. Thank you.
Salaam alaikum, rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. First of all, I wanna thanks the little boy here for what he said. Because that's why we are here. We are here for this. We are here for our kids. And when I say "selection book," I didn't say "banning books." So we are here to select the right books for our kids. We're not here to just ban any book for no reason. There are reasons to remove these books from the shelves. And you guys have to understand the fact that it's your responsibility to do that. Not mine, not them. We're here because you guys failed to do that. You're talking about revising a process. It's been there for years. But why we're here? The process has failed. You don't need to enhance that process. Get rid, get rid of that process. Come up with a complete new process. That's for the parents. When you say, "Oh, we revise that process. This is gonna be good." No, we all know that. This is a trash. You're just now trying to calm the parents with this nonsense talking. We are not targeting any group. And I'm talking about myself, that I'm not targeting any group. I was sent by my family here to get education because they know back home, US has the best education in the world. Education, science, physics, math, to enhance the brain of the kids. They did not send me to look to some books like, I can't say because it's, when I discuss with my, when I discuss with my daughter, she's gonna have to ask me, "Dad, why these books are on the shelf for us?" How can I justify that to her? You guys are parents. And I know you guys taking a lot of heat for that. I know it's your job, but it's a lot of heat because now it's becoming a national issue. But please, do not undermine any parents. It is not your job to undermine parents. Your job is listen to them. And the last thing I wanna say, it feels sad to me that we are up against teachers. No, we're not. Who's trying to put up the parents against teachers? That's stupid. My mom is a teacher. She is now principal. She's a teacher for 30 or 40 years. And I respect teachers. So I feel bad when all the teachers are coming up here just trying to defend and then point at parents. We work together.
Next speaker is Jamal Hiyafi of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on books.
Good evening, board. I think after three hours of listening to the parents, after three hours of listening to the parents, what else can we say? The board today sent an email, and they basically admitted or confirmed that such material should not be included in our school media center. And they also stated the law number, MCL Act 33, section, you know, until the end. So you believe in that, okay? And you send it to us. And you hear the parents, the majority of the parents, saying that we don't want these books. So you stated and reminded us of the law. You heard the parents, tomorrow morning, start moving these books from the libraries. Start working. That's it. That's what we need from you. Okay? Now, last Monday, some of you talked about the abdouth form. I looked at the abdouth form. It's either my kids should be banned from all the books, and that's unrealistic, or I should state the title and the author of the book that they should not check. So I should do your job and check more than 500,000 books to do that? Does that make sense? That doesn't make any sense. You know? Why didn't you classify these books and move them out? Move them out? This, it's very clear from what we heard, this is not a religious matter. It's not against a group. It's not against the teachers. Okay? This is, this is us, loyal to our kids. Not to the right and not to the left, not to any political party. We're not here for a political issue. But we will remember your names when August and November of every year comes. I will remember your names every August and every November comes. If this matter is not solved, then I'll make sure, you know, my vote's not for you, and I will, I will be active for that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Christina Camaro No City. Would like to speak to the board on how this harms the community and loyalty of what school board is to the community.
Yes, thank you for having me. And I speak here in support of many of my good friends from the city of Dearborn, also with parents. And I'm speaking as a parent and as an educator. As an educator, I have seen throughout our school system how our students are struggling to read. They're struggling to do math. Our students come to school for college and career readiness. Kids do not come to school, and back up, parents do not send their kids to school to explore their sexuality. That is not why people send their children to school. And also, we as a society have to love and be kind to everybody. Absolutely. All of us, even many of us who stand in agreement on this issue of parents' rights disagree on certain issues. But it is a false narrative that parents who do not want their children exposed to graphic sex acts somehow hate somebody. That is nonsense. And when I look at what our kids are exposed to in the media, the last thing they need to do at school... to do at school is learn how to sexually pleasure themselves. Also, I haven't heard the comment made recently, but many of the speakers here disparage the parents here as though they're being held captive by some right-wing agenda. Like the parents in this room are too stupid, too ignorant, to come to their own conclusions like they don't have their own set of morality to not want their kids exposed to this content. I'm speaking as a parent. We, the parents of America, are tired of the schools turning into social and political machines instead of institutions of higher learning as we're watching the students of America slip behind on a global scale to compete academically. This is not the time for more sexualization. And also, parents have a right to determine what their kids are exposed to. I think it is absolutely unacceptable for people in education to think that they know what's best for somebody else's child. God gave me my child, not the school district, and I guarantee you that every parent agrees. And every parent has a right to object to the things their kids are being exposed to. But there is a breaking point, and the breaking point is this: the fundamental existence of school is not to learn about sexual pleasure, not to learn about new sex acts. The fundamental purpose of school is to prepare our kids to be successful adults who can go off and have careers. And it is up to every parent to then teach their kids morality. It is out of the place for the school to do it, and I reject any notion that parents here are filled with hate or bigotry. The parents don't want their kids sexualized. If other people want to sexualize their kids, that's their business, not our...
Next speaker is Fuad Al Badani of Dearborn would like to speak to the board on dirty books. Fuad, Fuad Al Badani. Next speaker is Jeff Davis of Dearborn would like to speak to the board about sexual materials in children curriculum.
Good evening, and good evening, school board and teachers and parents. If I could, it'd be nice to lower the temperature a little bit as we talk about this. I'm very thankful for this city and for the schools. My kids graduated from schools here, and I now have grandchildren in the schools. Two of my children are educators, although not in this city, and we need education, it's very, very important. And teachers have a really big job to do, and it's already been mentioned, look at all the subjects that have to be taught and learned well. Reading, writing, arithmetic, science, technology, and the art of getting along with other people, that's very, very important. And as this lady very well said, "It's not about teaching them sexuality, that's not really the duty of the schools." And so, the teachers shouldn't be made to be responsible to teach sexuality, they're not authorized to do it, and they're not actually able to do it. And so, let's keep that out of the schools. Some educators and education boards mistakenly think it's their duty to raise other people's children, especially when it comes to sexuality and gender identity. In some cities, schools are even doing things that their parents don't agree to and don't know about. When the children come to school, they're helping the child dress in a different way according to a different sex, take on a different identity when they're at school, and then change back when they go home. Now, God forbid that that should happen here, but it's happening in real cities, in real schools in America, and teachers mistakenly think it's their job to do that. And they're not, it's not their job, and they're not helping children, and they're not really doing the responsibility that we've authorized them to do, although some people think so. Now, my daughter and her husband are both teachers, they have two little boys, my grandsons, they love their children very much, we love them, and they love their students, but they know the difference between their students and their children. And they can say, "These are my kids," and they mean, "These are my students," and they care for them and they love them. And when they say, "These are my kids and they're their children," they love them, but there's a difference. They send those children back to their parents, and they're not undermining the parents' tutelage and the parents raising of them. So I just think this is a fundamental idea. I know, it's like I've been in a time machine back in 1995 in another city, very similar to this, this kind of thing went on, and it's only gotten worse. So we really need to rethink this whole thing. It is not the responsibility of the school boards and the teachers to raise children in issues of sexuality.
Next speaker is Abdullah Ahmed of Dearborn would like to speak to the board on pushing sexual ideology on teens and pre-teens. Abdullah Ahmed. Either side would work.
Assalamualaikum. And for anyone who does not speak Arabic, this means may peace be upon you. Keyword, peace. Don't misconstrue our religion and culture, we are here for peace of mind. My name is Abdullah Ahmed and I grew up in Dearborn schools and lived in Dearborn my whole life. I think I can say on behalf of the majority of our community that we don't care whether the pornographic photos and erotic speech are homosexual, lesbian, or straight. If there's pornography in any books available to kids and teens, we want that out, gay or not. And to one person earlier saying that porn in books is the American way, keep that phony American way in your home, not in our communities. Parents have responsibilities and try to upbringing their children in the best way possible, and they send their kids to school, which is supposed to be a safe haven, come to find out these books and schools are teaching kids to make decisions they are not capable of making. You aren't their parents, and if parents want to show this kind of disgusting material to their kids, that is their choice to be made at home, not at school. Nobody is perfect and everybody makes mistakes, but mistakes are quickly resolved or at least a great effort is given to make things right. Why are we split in the first place? Does the LGBT community show porn to their kids growing up? I don't think so. As a married man and Insha Allah a parent in the future, this scares me. I do not accept this, and Dearborn should not accept this.
Next speaker is Shadi Maori of Dearborn would like to speak to the board about the current situation.
Assalamualaikum, everyone, good evening. First and foremost, I'd like to ask everyone to just hold the clapping till the end, just for all speakers in general. I'd like to offer you guys a student perspective from my opinion, as I'm not a parent, but I am a former graduate of Dearborn Public Schools. And actually, this was my middle school stout, being here just brings back so many memories. Aside the point, the reason why many of us are here today isn't about censorship. As Americans living in this country, we're well aware of the First Amendment, the freedom of speech, religion, expression. We're here to talk about the explicit sexual content in certain books in Dearborn Public Schools. Children are at school for almost about eight hours a day, which is practically half their day, not counting the time that they're asleep. So I would say that a school is a children, a child's second home besides from their actual home. This is where children are taught, that's where they grow up. And as a student, growing up in Dearborn Public Schools, I was never exposed to this type of sexuality. I took two sex ed classes, once in fifth grade and another in seventh grade, but it was like pretty much straightforward, talked about safe sex, HIV, etc. But to find out, to hear that there are certain books in a school community which I am prideful to call home is honestly disappointing. And to the school board, I hope you guys can see where the community is coming from. This isn't an attack to you guys directly or to the teachers, because we are well aware of all the hard work that you guys all do. This is just about the sexualization of children, the exposing of children to this type of content. We are aware that this content is on the internet and everywhere, but we're talking about just these books specifically. This isn't an attack to the LGBTQ community or anyone in particular. Like I said, this is America, it's a free country. Thank you, everyone.
Next speaker is Adam Mil... The name, it's not as clear, but I think it's Miller Bond, would like to speak, of Dearborn, would like to speak to the board on the review and removal of books from the school libraries. Adam Miller Bond? Okay. They're not here, okay. Mr. Ali Sindy of Dearborn would like to address the board on why we give parent rights to vote in each school depends on how many kids they have in schools. Ali Sindy? Next speaker is Jarallah Shariyan of Dearborn would like to speak to the board on books. Jarallah? Next speaker is Mahdi, Sammy Mahdi of Dearborn would like to speak to the board on books.
Hello, my name is Sammy Mahdi and I am from Woodwards Middle School and I am in the sixth grade. These books are influencing us youth in a negative way. These books are unacceptable and inappropriate for people of all ages, let alone the youngsters. Their presence alone in the library affecting the youth of this community, making the library an uncomfortable, disgraceful, and unethical place to be. These unethical books do not benefit us in developing a stronger character with integrity and honesty, although they do the opposite. What is the sensual, the library to you? The sensual library to me is a respected place in a sanctuary to better myself. These unethical books are mostly in our library, and most of us students go to the library as a safe haven. And just knowing that these books are in our environment is disturbing. And we students do not feel comfortable in the library knowing these pedophilia-like books are present in the heart of our community. What can we replace these meanlingus books with? We can replace these books with positive and beneficial books we can actually learn from and positively influenced and educated by. We cannot let these books affect the youth of our community. We are an anti-Semitic, we are not anti-Semitic nor hateful people towards any group of people. We respectfully request the board to remove these books from the library and end this crisis, and that's all right.
Next speaker is Muhsin Hwashi of Dearborn Heights would like to address the board on the issue of the topic. Muhsin Al Hwashi? Next speaker is Rawan Haydar of Dearborn would like to speak to the board on parental ban of books.
Can, give us just a moment. She can't, the microphone isn't working, give us just a moment. Try again, please.
The mic is not working. Can you try the other mic, please?
Better?
Yes, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Rawan Haydar, I'm a third-year law student at Michigan State University, a Lebanese Muslim-American, and I have been a proud resident of Dearborn for 25 years. Before I begin, I want to warn those listening and present that what I speak about today may be triggering for some. 16 to 19 years old, that is the age range when most young girls are in high school or just starting college. This also happens to be the age range in which females are four times more likely than the general population to be victims of sexual assault, attempted rape, or even rape itself. 16 to 19. This also happens to be the major topic of the novels Push and The Lovely Bones, which are two books that are currently under review. How about another one? It is estimated that every one in six individuals identifies as being a part of the LGBTQ plus community. That means for every classroom of 30 students, there are five of those students who are part of the community. The novels This Book Is Gay and All Boys Aren't Blue, which are also currently under review, gives real-life insight and a breakdown of what it means to grow up not identifying as a straight individual. These books have been deemed pornographic, against good Muslim values, or as being set out to carry on some sort of homosexual agenda. Many parents here tonight are under the assumption that the only resolution is to ban them. However, the First Amendment is not dead. The truth is that the statistics that I have discussed here do not exempt the Dearborn community. As strong and as united as this community has proved itself to be, there are still young females amongst us and throughout our own community who are suffering or have suffered at the hands of their abusers. And despite the strong religious presence within this community that does not take away the fact that there are still young adults out here in the Dearborn Public School System who are struggling to come to terms with their sexuality. For better or for worse, books are the gateway to independent, critical thought, imagination, and understanding of differing experiences. And to force a ban on books that will 100% benefit students who identify and resonate with the themes we've talked about tonight is an act of selfishness and intolerance. I understand that not every parent is okay with their child being exposed, but the board and its media specialists have taken the time to curate a wonderful equitable mechanism that adheres to both state and federal law and gives parents precisely what they want, right? So why has this become public news? Why are we here today? Our chief police was not mistaken on Monday when he said the eyes of the nation are on us. What have we shown the nation? We have shown that we as a minority population of primarily Middle Eastern Muslim-Americans have forgotten our own struggle with hatred, discrimination, prejudice, and violence. We have forgotten the signs that were held up against us, the isolation, the pain and fear we have all felt because those harming us couldn't take a step back to see who we were as people. I urge the Dearborn community to please reflect on this when they pull up the signs.
Next speaker is Ihab Al Madhawi of Dearborn would like to speak to the board on child ed. Ihab? Next speaker is Mike Krug of Dearborn would like to speak to the board on books.
Hello, thank you. I'd like to talk a bit about some books. I think everyone is familiar with Romeo and Juliet. Well, in Act 3, Scene 5, there's an underage sex that happens in Romeo and Juliet, but that book is not on the ban list. Why? Because it's not gay. That's why. There's another book called The Diary of Anne Frank, where she talks about how her thoughts on sex and sexuality and while she was hiding from the Nazis. That book is not on the ban list because it's straight. It is not about the book, just like many people have already said here. It's people who say they're not bigoted are the people who are trying to ban the books, and the people who are saying they're being silenced, and the people who are saying they feel attacked and ostracized are the people of the LGBT gay community. If I were to believe one over the other, I would believe those people that are feeling attacked. You're the one that keeps saying you're being a bigot. In any case, I didn't accuse anyone of being a bigot. People keep saying they're not bigots. What I'm trying to point out is that the people who keep saying they're not bigots are not part of the community that's being targeted. The people who are targeted, the LGBT community, keep saying they're being targeted, keep saying they're being silenced. There's been a lot of talk already about suicide rates in the LGBT community. If the theory here is that we're trying to help children and protect children, then we need to keep these books in schools because that will help them not commit suicide. Or is that not really the truth? And finally, if I can say anything else... And finally, if I can say anything else, to the LGBT community, these people who are trying to silence you are terrified of you. They think that reading your books will turn their children gay, which is like me saying if I read a comic book, I can fly. It is a nonsense statement. So, stop being afraid of these books. If you’re really worried about them, I don’t know, maybe talk to your kids about them, read them with them, give them context. Try something like that. And finally, I lost my train of thought because applause makes me uncomfortable, so goodnight.
Our last in-person comment would be like, I call Amar El-Rahi to the stage.
Please may we have quiet. Thank you.
She would like to come to speak to the board about books, and she’s from Garden City. Go ahead.
Good evening, my fellow brothers and sisters. My name is Amar An Nahy. I am a 22-year-old American citizen, born and raised in Dearborn, Michigan. I can confidently say that never in my life did I ever think that I would have to question our state’s ability to protect our kids. As an educator, I will not condone such reckless and dangerous actions taken upon by the Board of Education. When was it okay to enforce inappropriate sexual contact, on, content on our children? If books about weaponry and violence are banned from libraries in order to prevent premature damage on impressionable kids, how are books with content that could easily be considered pornography any less dangerous? Guns kill people, and porn kills brains. The damage is quite slyer, but no less influential. But, in the United States of America, kids that are 17 and younger, orphans are mandated by court to live in foster homes, and because of that, they are old enough, they aren’t old enough to be independent, to work for themselves, to pay for themselves, and to even think for themselves. So, I ask the Board of Education, since children are seemingly old enough to read or look at such promiscuous content, why can’t they live independently? Drink what they want, smoke what they want? There’s a reason they can’t, and that’s because they are impressionable bodies, given to us as a trust from God to nurture and mold them into human beings in our great American society. When not, when not only are children incredibly impressionable, they can be extremely impulsive. The decisions they make are always factored by the friends they have, the shows they watch, and the books they read. And of course, I must say, I’m not here to bash the LGBTQ community. That’s not my intention, and to be completely honest, at the moment, I couldn’t care less. What I can say though, what I can say though, is that we seem to care a little too much. Are that, are we that wimpy that we deny facts in order to safeguard feelings? Have emotions overcome the world to such an extent that they’ve seeped into politics into a way that our laws are enforcing me to accept delusion and gender dysphoria? But it seems worth, but it seems we’re fighting the masses, schools are more fit to teach our kids about forms of sexuality than the things that would actually contribute to their education. But according to the school of board, these books are imperative into the development of our children, and our kids can have a gateway to imagination and a gateway to knowledge. Am I right, Mayor? These are your words, but I’m certain you would take them back if you understood it’s vile and has its consequences. And before I go, I must say to the people behind me, thank you for showing up, because regardless of why you’re here, you’re here for the sake of our kids. So, please, after this meeting, ask your children what they are learning in school. They need your help as much as this states. Let’s become more involved in our kiddos’ lives and hopefully gain more connections in their districts and community. Our kids are our future, and they need all the help they can get. Thank you for your time and attention.
Next, I will read from the blue cards for those who submitted a blue card but did not wish to speak. This is from Yaya Al-Gami. She said, they said that they do not wish to speak to the board, but they would like to make the following comment: Don’t touch, don’t touch, touch, teach sex in class. Next, this person is anonymous from Dearborn Heights. I fear my children being exposed to the sexual content of anything the school board wished to expose my children to in the future. Next is from Dearborn Heights, Mostafa Al-Morsi. I worry for my future children, even as a 23-year-old, and what the full, the school board will expose my children to in the future. Next, from Dearborn, Mohammed Mareh. I don’t want my kids to learn about sex. Next, Rebecca Dehulio from Dearborn. Our children have access to the whole world on their phones. This is not about books. Please protect our children, particularly our LGBTQ+ children. Next, from Amar Baydoun from Dearborn representing himself. Please remove all explicit sexual books from our libraries for sake for children. Next, a concerned parent. Please remove any sexual explicit books from our school libraries. Next, from Dearborn representing myself, himself, and family from Asmahan Mashra. Please read my statement attached. Hello, I’m writing to you as a parent and an educator of Dearborn Public Schools. Over the past few weeks, it has been disheartening to see our community be broken up and pitted against one another. Schools versus parents, district versus community, and to do so in the most disrespectful ways. To do so with misinformation and an agenda to divide. There shouldn’t be a divide. We have one purpose and mission to make sure that our students get the best education in the best manner aligned with our state standards. Students first, always. As parents, we have every right to be concerned with our students’ education, but there is a manner in which we can question and raise concerns with curriculum, books and lessons that is respectful, and not in a way that is accusing our teachers of slanderous things, or in a form of harassment, which is what we have been happening in the last few weeks. As a parent, every question I ever had regarding my child was asked and answered. I’m with teachers and admin to relay my concerns, and was never once turned away. I was always welcomed into the school, classroom, and meeting without hesitation. Our job is to make sure as parents, we show up and ask to meet with our teachers, admin, et cetera. We should be raising our concerns in a respectful way that allows for community growth, and not in a manner that divides us. Thank you, your fellow community member. Next, from Munna Mashra, representing myself and family. I’m a proud parent of three Dearborn school students. I am shocked by the visceral and countless attacks against our teachers these past two months. There have been slanderous claims that our teachers are groomers and pedophiles and are indoctrinating children through the curriculum. All the while, the district has not publicly addressed the misinformation and slander as it continues. As a parent, I would like to see the district issue a statement that clarifies that curriculum, the curriculum misinformation, and takes a stand against the slander being directed against our teachers. It’s not just the statement made about the book reviews. Enough is enough. The only way to push back against these falsehoods is to, is with clear factual information that is translated into Arabic and made available in audio formats, too. Not all, not all our families are literate in Arabic. These people have created divisions and broken the trust between the community and the district. Address these lies directly to begin to repair the harm they have caused. Next, from Dearborn representing themselves, Abbas Al-Masi. As a father, I do not want you to teach my kids sexuality. Next, Gamal Said from Dearborn. Don’t teach sex to my kids. Next, Abdullah Ali from Dearborn. No sex in school. Next, El-Baidani from Dearborn. I disagree with sexuality taught. Next, Deborah Bondi from Dearborn. We need to restore funding for media, media centers, have confidence in the media specialist. Books should not be banned because the kids that need these books are the ones whose parents are looking to ban books. Next, from Johnny Williams from Dearborn representing themselves. My First Amendment right to be heard and also to be able to hear other people’s Next, Jennifer Cordy from Gross Eel representing Dearborn teachers. Everyone is welcome, everyone is loved, and everyone is safe. Next, Joe Winkle representing Dearborn teachers. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Winkle, and I am a teacher in Dearborn Public Schools at Miller Elementary. I originally completed my student teaching at Gear Park roughly eight years ago, and I’m thrilled to have been welcomed back to this community last year. I am sorry I cannot be there tonight to share these thoughts with you myself, but I am needed at home to help care for my four-month-old son. As I’m sure most of us understand, the love of a parent has for their child will take priority over everything in their lives. Sadly, the love this community has for its children is being taken advantage of by a wolf in sheep’s clothing. This wolf has joined the flock not to help, but to vide and conquer, to lead the flock to slaughter for the good of its pack. The pack this wolf belongs to wants to attack public education and public school teachers. They are willing to sacrifice this community, the Arab-American community, and the Muslim community to accomplish this goal. They are willing to smear, to smear the good names of these communities to accomplish their goal. Public schools are a safe place where students of all cultures, religions, and races should feel safe. This pack of predators wants to stop that from happening, and they are willing to lead this community, this flock to slaughter, to make that happen. Parents and teachers want the same thing, for children to grow in a safe space. Please, let the schools and the parents stand together against this hate to make our community even stronger for the children and save their schools. Do not let the wolves, the true predators, manipulate us into fighting each other. That’s the end.